I want to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, and just as one.
The first item on today's agenda is the Citizen Forum, a time set aside for any citizens who would like to address the Commission on a matter that is not on the official agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward for that purpose? Seeing none, we will continue on to Awards and Proclamations.
Item 4.1, the month of February is Black History Month in the city of Salina. Eleanor Jones, Secretary of the NWAACP, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jokel and fellow commissioners. I shall read to you today the proclamation, February 2008, Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is an opportunity for all Americans to honor the rich cultural heritage and legacy of people of African descent and pay tribute to them and the community organizations that contribute to the social, cultural, economic, and political life of Salina. And whereas the citizens of Salina have been in the forefront of efforts to establish a caring compassionate society based on the inherent dignity of all its members by taking a leadership role aimed at eliminating all forms of discrimination and disadvantage and by recognizing that a fundamental strength of our community is based on the diversity among us. Now therefore, I, Allen Jokel, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2008, Black History Month, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, be affixed this day, February 4, 2008.
Are there some special activities during the month you'd like to draw our attention to?
Yes, thank you. There is a Black History Month display on the second floor of this building and also on Saturday, February 9, George Washington Carver Day celebration in Minneapolis, Kansas. There will be a film shown of his life in Kansas at the Ottawa County Museum in Minneapolis, followed by a short program at the Presbyterian Church and a luncheon. The lunch cost is $7.75 for adults and $5 for youth and 12 and under. Black History Month program at Coyle United Methodist Church, Saturday, February 16, free and open to the public. The NAACP Salina Branch Annual Freedom Fund banquet will be Saturday, February 23 at the Holiday Inn. The cost will be $35 for adults and 15 for youth, 12 and under. And our guest speaker, Secretary Rod Brimby, and the keynote speaker is Tony Burrows, internationally known genealogist. The doors will open at 4:00 PM, dinner at 6:00. Music will be provided by the Kansas Wesleyan Jazz Band.
Thank you very much. I have a signed copy of your proclamation I'd like to give you.
Item 4.2, the month of February is National Ambux Month in the city of Salina. Karen Vidrickson, President of Noon Network Ambux, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Whereas Ambux is dedicated to creating mobility and independence for people with disabilities, whereas the recognition of Ambux as an organization making an important difference in communities across the United States as a noteworthy event. Whereas Salina is proud to boast three chapters of Ambux, Salina AM, Breakfast Bandits, the Noon Network, and Red Baron. Whereas Noon Network chapter of Ambux is a chapter now celebrating 16 years of service, the Salina AM chapter is now celebrating 48 years of service, and the Red Baron chapter is now celebrating 27 years of service. Whereas Salina is proud to be the home of Ambux past National President Tom Laudes and the current District 5E Governor John Reynolds. Whereas each of the chapters have various community projects in which they participate, such as fully accessible playgrounds in public parks and schools, financial assistance to children with disabilities, therapeutic amtrikes for children, and scholarships for students in physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech and language pathology degree programs. Now therefore, I, Allen E. Jokel, Mayor of the City of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2008 as National Ambux Month. In Salina, Kansas, an urge all citizens to become more aware of the altruistic service, the wholesome upbuilding of communities they render. An official recognition whereof, I hereby affix my signature this fourth day of February 2008.
Thank you. Likewise, are there some particular activities you want to mention?
Yes, we're very excited that this year we're going to be having a storefront display out at the Central Mall explaining what Ambux does for the community and inviting people to come join our chapter meetings. We're also planning an Amtrike giveaway at the Central Mall on February 16, and this is a very emotional thing where children who cannot move their legs but can use their hands can pedal the bikes, and we provide these bikes to the children or adults at no charge, and they range from $250 to $600 a trike. So we're planning on giving three of those away if the families can work on it. Excuse me, we've already confirmed one family. We're working with the Kansas Special Olympics this year again, and we're preparing for our bit of petite auction throughout the month of February, which will provide a lot of documentation throughout the community, letting people know that Ambux is around.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
I have a signed copy of your proclamation also. We have no public hearings today, so we will continue with the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 28, 2008. Item 6.2, approve the minutes of January 30, 2008. Item 6.3, Resolution Number 086488, appointing Courtney Moy to the Salina Human Relations Commission. Item 6.4, amend the 2008 Buildings and Facilities SubCIP by replacing the Memorial Hall Gym heating project with a gymnastic vaulting floor project.
Entertain a motion?
May I move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second. Motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes five to zero. There's no development business today likewise, so we will continue with items of administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 0810436, amending Chapter 42, Article 6, Division 14, Section 42-303 of the Salina Code pertaining to conditional uses in the C4 district.
This item passed on first reading, January 28. I'd entertain any additional public comment if there is any. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move for approval of ordinance number 0810436 on second reading?
Second. Motion is to approve ordinance 08-10436, which amends Salina Code, the pertinent section pertaining to conditional uses in the C4 business district. Will clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Commissioner Vanir?
Aye.
Mayor Jokel?
Aye.
Item 8.2, first reading ordinance number 0810437, amending Chapter 14 of the Salina Code by adding Section 14-6 pertaining to vehicle rescue service fee. Subitem 8.2A, Resolution Number 086487, amending the comprehensive fee schedule by establishing a vehicle rescue service fee.
Chief Milliken?
Mayor and Commissioners, we brought this item to you a number of weeks ago in a study session. What this is, this is an attempt by the Department to enhance our fire service rescue capability through the replacement of equipment and sharing of costs, not only from the taxpayers currently within Saline County, but also for drivers who reside outside Saline County. Historically, these services have been funded primarily through our local tax base, and that in a move to try to balance the cost of service across the people who receive those services, we have a number of people and drive on the interstate and other places where we deliver rescue services. And so what this primarily does is allows us the ability to charge for rescue service fees. Since our study session and some of the questions that you raised, we may raise or went back and did some modifications. The first blush at this was much more broad based than what you see before you today. Today, this ordinance primarily deals with strictly motor vehicle accidents, deals strictly with collecting insurance or collecting the fees from insurance and billing drivers that do not reside within Saline County or own property for those services. In addition to that, we also took out any provision that would get into the area of uninsured motorists where you couldn't have a situation come up where those costs were transferred back to a resident of Saline County. We would not collect for those services in that case should there be an uninsured driver out there. So I'm asking you today to consider this ordinance that will help us offset some of those costs in the future, and it's certainly probably one of the first in the state here as far as the Fire Department of Kansas to do this. But nationwide, there are more and more departments moving in this direction in cities and municipalities trying to spread those costs out to everybody who receives the services. One of the things that I did do after our study session was I went out to four different insurance companies, and I asked them about this rescue service fee, how would this be handled? And they said it would fall into their normal medical coverage under a normal fire or normal automobile insurance policy. So they said there wouldn't be a problem with paying these types of fees or qualifying for it. So I think we've answered that question that if people are insured, that insurance companies and quite honestly, they really don't even balk at it. They said, "That's not a problem, we'll pay that fee and go on." So it's really, in your court, whether you want to consider that.
Okay, thank you. Chief, any questions? The staff report? Thank you very much. I entertain a public comment if there is any. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission, and we do need two motions on this matter. Mayor, I'd move we adopt ordinance number 08-10437, amending Chapter 14 of the Salina Code by adding Section 4-16 pertaining to vehicle rescue service fee.
Second.
Motion is to approve ordinance 08-10437, which amends Salina Code by adding a section regarding vehicle service rescue fees. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes five to zero.
Okay, may I move that Resolution Number 086487, amending the comprehensive fee schedule by establishing a vehicle rescue service fee be approved?
Second.
Motion is to approve a resolution 08-6487, which establishes a vehicle rescue service fee. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.3, award of bids for the 2008 vehicles and equipment Phase 1 purchases.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. We opened bids for these items on January 11, 2008. It attached to the request for City Commission action, a spreadsheet that summarized the bids, and also the copy of the vehicles and equipment program for this year with the bid amounts, the recommended amounts plugged in, so you can see what the effect is on the program. Most of the items are straightforward, low qualifying bid recommendations. There are however, a few exceptions. We do have a few items where the recommended low bid does not meet specifications. In other words, we waive the, some elements of specifications. Those items are two half-ton trucks, and in that case, the payload that was specified was not a payload that anybody could meet. All the bidders had difficulty providing vehicles with the specified payload. Six-yard dump truck, there were some emissions control changes we were not aware of. And then a turf tractor in which the recommended bid has a manually operated PTO as opposed to an automatically operated PTO, I believe that's the difference. The worksite utility vehicle that's listed there should not be there. We feel all these represent immaterial deviations from the specs. Despite some requests from multiple vendors, we received only one bid for two items. That was a police package motorcycle and a rotary screw air compressor. Several recommended purchases are sole source acquisitions. These include the asphalt milling machine from Asphalt Zipper and the Toro Polar Track cab and snow removal system, which is made for only to fit one of our existing mowers. Recommended rejections, we reject, recommending rejecting all bids for a greens aerifier for the golf course and for a vacuum trailer for utilities. Phase 1 recommendation includes 17 of the 38 items authorized for 2008. Total amount bid for these items was $1,152,232 compared to a budgeted amount of $1,365,000 or $212,000 less than anticipated. Recommendation is to approve the 2008 vehicles and equipment plan purchases. Department personnel are available to answer any specific questions you might have.
Did I understand you right, the worksite utility vehicle on page 5 should be deleted?
No, it's not. It should not have been on the list of recommended low bids that don't meet specifications. Recommended bid in that case does meet specifications.
I see, okay. I had one other one, the police package motorcycle, are there not other? Is it make a vehicle?
It was sent to a number of providers, and we received no other bids other than the one. So, you know, Chief has anything to add or not?
I often wonder if we need them at all, but I guess they are used occasionally. Motorcycles in this day and age. The other thing I wondered, well, it's just an aside, I see that we're getting one last round. I think this is the last chance to buy Crown Vic Police cars, and I see we have those. I believe that they're going out of production this year. So hopefully we'll get something that's a little more economical to run around the city and idle.
Good case for motorcycles.
Well, not really. Not really. Not really, they can't carry any of their gear on those motorcycles, or not very much of it. Be able to catch up with the bad guys, though.
Any additional questions, staff? Thank you very much. I entertain any public comment. Commission action?
Mayor, I move that we approve the 2008 vehicles and equipment plan purchases as recommended.
Second. Motion is to award the bids for the 2008 vehicles and equipment Phase 1 purchases. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That passes four to zero with Vanir recused.
Item 8.4, Resolution Number 086489, accepting the downtown parking master plan.
Mr. Gage?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Early last year, the City Commission contracted with Rich &amp; Associates to perform a detailed downtown parking master plan. They were selected through a request for qualifications process, and we felt that after that, that they were very qualified and actually the most qualified of those that we looked at. The last time the downtown parking's been looked at was about 1985, and in 2002, we had a company called Progressive Urban Management Associates look at the economics of downtown and make some recommendations, and they emphasized the need for a parking study at some point in the future. The basic scope of the parking plan includes a few key items, parking inventory analysis, turnover and occupancy study, parking demand calculations, parking operational assessment. There was a lot of public input through employee manager surveys, stakeholder meetings and public forums, and then obviously parking recommendations. Some kind of quick highlights of some things they found. They found that the city owned and or managed about 57% of the downtown parking, and they felt that was good because you can coordinate the management of that. The benchmark they used was 50%, so anything in excess of that was found to be good. Daily turnover as a whole was about 2.11 out of a high of four for the short-term parking. So that's okay, nothing special. I think they would find that a little more turnover in the short term would be good, but it's not on the real bad side. As far as peak daytime parking for the on-street, they found that was 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. For off-street, they found it was a little earlier in the morning from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. They also found that eight-hour parking spaces in five municipal lots are maintaining 90 to 100% occupancy. So the eight-hour spaces are being used a lot, and we'll need to look at that. There are also two, there are the two-hour parking in Lot 6A, which is just down the road here on 7th Street, was between 82% and 100% occupied between 3:00 PM and 5:00 PM, just to kind of give you an idea. Overall, they did feel that we have adequate parking in the whole downtown, but it's really a question of load balancing the lots. You have a chart that's included, and I have to apologize, some of the attachments did not get included, but the most important probably did, and that's the surplus deficit map. Gives you the boundaries of the area, and it shows you by color coding those with excess availability, and those are shown with a blue shade. And then with a green, yellow, or red, those have a deficit. So you can kind of get an idea of what they found in all of that. Certainly, we will need to look at each of those and to determine the quantity of two or, I'll say two hour at this point in time, and eight-hour parking in those areas, and figure out a way to load balance those parking lots. They also looked at, from an operational perspective, the enforcement, they looked at parking ticket statistics and how that's implemented. They looked at the special parking permits that are utilized, and they also did a brief parking survey with Hutchinson, Lawrence, and Manhattan to provide some comparisons. The full plan is on our webpage for anyone who might be interested, they can pull that up and take a look at it. And a couple typos we are working on fixing that don't affect the data, but just as an FYI. Attached is a summary sheet of recommendations, and I'm not going to go down every one, but because again, this is found on our webpage, but some of the highlights that they had. You know, we'd anticipated they weren't going to come out and say, "Hey, City of Salina, you need to build a parking garage today." We didn't expect that would happen, and it didn't happen, but they do have a lot of recommendations related to the operations and management of parking downtown. They recommend handheld ticket riders and software primarily because it's so much more efficient, and you can get good parking data, and it gives you better information to look at changes in the lots. You also can deal with multiple, those who have multiple tickets a lot more efficiently as well. Graduated fines, they like the idea that your fines can go up if you continue to be a violator. They did have recommendations on the actual fines. The overtime fine from $2 to $6, if it's not paid within 10 days, 15, and if not paid within 25 days, up to $35. And I will say, as we go down these, a lot of these things are going to have to come back to you for action, and the request that we have for you today is simply to accept the report and consider their work finished, and then we will look at a lot of these things, enforcement, the fines and so forth. Most all, that'll come back to you in separate actions, and what we will do is go work with Salina Downtown, Inc., and all the stakeholders, and try to figure out the best way to implement this for you, make sure it's pretty palatable. So it doesn't mean necessarily that because that's a recommendation, that's exactly what's going to happen. Could be that, but not necessarily. They feel that vehicle mobilization is a good idea, because quite honestly, right now we have a hard time with the current statutory climate in dealing with multiple offenders and those that don't pay their fines, and that's definitely a way to look at that. It's a better option than towing, so we'll look closely at that. Use of courtesy tickets, shoppers, those who want to park on, say, Santa Fe or one of the other streets and spend some time walking up and down, they felt that courtesy tickets could be used as a positive marketing opportunity. We call them tickets, they really wouldn't be, they would be more of a, here's how it works, and provide some information that would be helpful for them next time they come downtown. They recommend a parking advisory committee, which is really a good idea, just to bring the stakeholders together so we can coordinate together. Track the, monitor and sell parking permits. We issue parking permits today of various types, and they just feel we need to do a good job of tracking those and taking a look at them. Don't anticipate any major changes with those. Parking duration, this is a kind of a big one, and I think it's an advantage depending on how you look at it, but they recommend that what we call two-hour off-street parking to be three hours rather than two hours, provide a little bit more time. They believe that the parking directly behind businesses should be customer parking only because it's so close to the businesses. They discourage the future development of private surface parking lots in the core downtown. It just takes up a lot of space. They like us to look at some loading zones and some other minor things. Bicycle parking enhancements encourage that. Special events parking plan. We have a pretty good organizational team with special events, but this would kind of better formalize that. They like the walkways between some of the, that connect, some of the, a couple that connect the parking lots to Santa Fe through the buildings. We've had a lot of discussion the last couple of years on those, and quite honestly, at one point thought, "Well, maybe we don't need those." They feel they're very beneficial because they are a direct route, but they do feel they need to be, we need to change how they look, how they feel, and so forth. So if we keep those, we need to look at the lighting and the maintenance of those. So that's something that we'll need to take a look at. Consider adding pedestrian wayfinding to the downtown. Much of the wayfinding that we will have in our planned wayfinding will address part of that. We'll also address the parking signs. I don't anticipate we'll go with five full types of parking signs. What we'll try to do is best utilize what are wayfinding signs, because they should get someone to a public parking lot, and then once you get to that lot, you'll see the rules of the parking, whether it be three hours or eight hours and where that is. So I think we'll be able to incorporate without having five separate sets of signs, but they give some pretty good examples that we can pull from here. And then marketing is a really big thing, marketing and education to the public and how to use the parking downtown and how to get to it. They do recommend a parking enterprise fund so we can really coordinate the dollars in and the dollars out. It does provide some accountability as far as how you're using, say, parking fines, you know, because today, they go into the general fund, and I'll tell you, today, the fines don't even get close to covering the cost of anything we do related to parking, but it'll, if we do this, it will provide a little more accountability as to what's going in and what's going out. So if the question's ever asked, it's out there. And then the timing for additional parking development, they've made some recommendations on that, and as I mentioned, they're not recommending any new parking at this time, but that's something that, as you know, businesses change in different areas and different blocks, and a restaurant has a different effect than a professional service business, and so that is sort of a type of situation that we just, we have to continually monitor and then respond accordingly. That's a summary of many of the recommendations, and again, as you can tell, they're all basically management-type recommendations. We have a couple of recommendations for you, and when we look at this, the plan in itself, we believe it conforms with the strategic plan. If it can better allow us to utilize and load balance parking in the downtown, there's no question, it will help the downtown to be, to thrive and be vibrant. The plan in itself doesn't actually have any direct costs, but as we implement, obviously there may be some costs, and we'll bring those back to you when we look at those parts that'll be implemented, such as if we buy the electronic readers and that type of thing. Couple options, approve the resolution accepting the downtown parking master plan or do not accept it at this time. We gave you the option of accepting it because we were concerned if you endorse it, then it sounds like you're saying every specific recommendation, we're kind of tied into it, and everyone thinks that you have to do that exactly the way it's listed, and that's not the case with these plans. not the case with these plans. What they are is the recommendations, and so by accepting it, it means we'll, again, as I mentioned, we'll look at how we implement this, we'll talk to the people we need to talk to, and we may very well end up modifying to a certain degree some of these. But overall, a lot of them do make pretty good sense. I think staff thinks as it relates to downtown parking, but we wouldn't, we won't simply just go down the list. We'll work with people at each and every step. Given that, then the staff recommends alternative one, and be happy to answer any questions, and we also have some others that, in the audience, that may also be able to answer more specific questions.
So if I understand correctly, any plan would be thoroughly vetted with BID before any recommendations would be adopted?
Yeah, we closely coordinate with the downtown BID, SDI, and certainly we'll do that on all aspects related to implementation. Part of that's going to be timing, the fees, fines, use of the boot, things like that. There's, we want to be real sensitive in how any of that would be implemented and have those discussions.
I don't want to get too heavy in the details in that case, but there's one thing that caught my eye, this idea of implementing a parking advisory committee. Isn't that BID's job to begin with, or?
Yeah, it can be. I think really what they're looking at here is a little bit more of an administrative committee. It includes some BID folks and some staff people. They want to make sure, for example, on our end, that administration, public works who deals with certain aspects of parking, like our engineering folks and law enforcement are also in that. So it's not so much a real formal, we'll have to look at it. It could be a formal citizen-appointed committee. It doesn't have to be either. It may just be more of a staff-type-oriented implementation committee, and we work with the BID. We'll look at that and see what makes sense and get some guidance from you a little bit later.
Okay. Will any of this be immediately implemented?
Well, I don't think immediately. Again, for example, signage will have to be purchased. First, we're going to need to decide where all the three-hour spaces will be, and that's real important, too, to load balance. It's probably one of the first things we need to do. We really need to discuss the timing of anything related to the regulatory aspect of this, too, and, for example, we may provide a timeline that says, we're not going to implement this until this point in time, so if you want to come in and pay your back fines that you have for parking, please come in and do that. We're going to have to talk through some of that stuff.
What do you think that timeline will be approximately?
Soon, I think, once we get it accepted, that tells us that you're ready for us to do that, so we'll coordinate with SDI and start looking at each of those and try to put the timeline for you.
Okay.
Additional comments, staff? Questions, staff, I mean? Seeing none, I invite any public comment, if there is any?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Phil Clement, 917 South Santa Fe, representing Salina Downtown. The Board of Directors of Salina Downtown and the Lee District have accepted this study. We understand that that does not mean that we endorse everything that's in the study as far as implementation is concerned. The one recommendation that we felt strongly about was that we not implement any change until there's six months of data after we purchase the handheld equipment, and I think you'll find that in one of your recommendations. Since Salina Downtown is charged with marketing the parking of downtown, we felt strongly that that six months of data would allow us to work closely with the enforcement officers and also the citizenry and the public that uses our parking lots most frequently to allow us to do some direct marketing with them and perhaps influence some change in their parking habits.
When you talk about the six-month period, you're anticipating that some of the reorganizing of the lots would already be done, like the three-hour time limit-
That would be correct.
-in the off-streets. There's one of those that really troubles me, and that's 2C, the one on Fifth Street that goes clear through to Fourth Street between the Two Images facilities, and it shows on the map going from eight-hour to three-hour. Is that really the recommendation? Because it seems totally wrong to me. It seems to me-
I think that's one of those lots that we would have to take a really strong look at and-
At least the west side of it ought to be eight-hour and remain that way, I would think.
Make that, sure that's consistent with the parking habits and the need in that area, because that is a heavily employee-used parking area.
Right.
Commissioner, just so you know, what that would mean, as you mentioned, the change in the timing, you'd have change in the timing, change in the posting, and also, you would need to have the handheld technology in place, because that's where you're going to get your good information to study. So quite a few things that would need to happen ahead of that six-month timeframe.
If they're, if they're right on the percentage of violators, at, the total violators may fall below ten percent once we have three-hour parking in, available in quantity. So the handheld meters will confirm that.
Yeah, I think so. I think we should have adequate information to be able to tell that if you purchased the handheld meters.
Because if we fall below ten percent violators, then why bother harassing them at all?
Yeah, but I think the main policy question you're going to have on the amount of fines is two things, well, primarily one. The, if we implement using, say, the boot, people will pay their fines, without question. So you're not going to have a back, you're not going to have an issue with that.
When you say the boot, that's the one that I am absolutely positively opposed to. That's a total waste of money. Just let the air out of the tires. For free.
We appreciate that, but we think we have a pretty good answer for enforcement. Given that, we think that the fines will be paid. The main policy question you're probably going to have is, is how much do you want the parking activity to pay for the technology and the parking, the signage and the other improvements? And that's the policy question you'll have later down the road.
Well, if you have a hundred percent conformance, you don't have any income off the program.
Yeah, we're not going to have a hundred percent. We're going to always shoot for it, though.
You can get down to seven or eight percent.
Additional public comment?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Andrea Pfeifer, 523 West Jewell, Salina. My husband and I own a business downtown, and one of the, we're starting our seventh year and absolutely love it, but the only complaint that any of my customers have ever had is the total shock of the fact that they can't park downtown Salina for more than two hours. Our shop is a relatively large location, and many of our shoppers spend more than two hours just in our shop alone, and we frequently recommend all of our downtown restaurants and other shops in the area that we think might appeal to our shoppers and our clientele that we have. And what I spent, I've never once in the six years that I have, six-plus years now that we've run the business, had anyone complain to me about how far they had to walk to get to my shop, but the number of people that I've had complained to me about the fact that they get a $2 parking ticket for coming to my shop and spending money, and spending money at the restaurants, and spending money at the quilting stores, and spending money at all these places, gets really hard for me to sit behind my counter and smile and go, I know, you know? And I recommend people that they can call and voice their opinion to, and most people, I have no way to know. We have a huge amount of business that come from out of town. We have a huge amount of business that come from out of state. I would say more than seventy percent of our business we do from out of town and out of state. And most of the people know when they come downtown that they're going to have to walk. We always hear in these parking studies and stuff about how, you know, people complain because they don't want to have to walk for more than, you know, ten steps to get into a building. I believe that people who come down to a downtown shopping district like this realize that they're going to have to walk. That's part of why they come. It's part of what it is. It's no different than going to the mall and walking to thirty different stores in the mall and spending miles and miles, sometimes walking back and forth. So every time I hear that in these parking studies about people complaining about how far they have to walk, I think that probably falls along more with the employees that are complaining about it, and if the parking spaces were more validated, or the parking areas were more validated, I guess, and especially in the areas where we tend to have the most trouble, and they are very concentrated areas, a lot of that problem would be decreased. Right now, we're looking at only a four percent violation on on-street parking, and I don't know that all of this is worth four percent violation. I mean, if people complain about the employees parking on, on the street and taking up customer space, when you're only talking about four percent of the people, of the spaces being violated for over-parking, that's not a lot. And when you get back into the back parking lots, most of the violations that seem to be happening are violations in the, in the lots that are two-hour parking, that are heavily, heavily concentrated lots to begin with, and they're not, sixteen percent of the parking violations out of the twenty-two overall drop off after a four-hour time period. So maybe we have employees that are parking in two-hour off-street parking places, they're gone in a four-hour time period, not that I'm endorsing employee parking in two hours, but if not, we actually have customers who are make, taking the extra steps to walk to a, from a two-hour off-street parking to do their shopping, to do their dining, and all that kind of stuff, and if they're gone in four hours, which after, you know, we drop from sixteen percent to three percent after that, it doesn't seem much, you know, it kind of makes you wonder why we would go through all this. And then on top of that, think about raising the fine to $6 for a parking ticket. I don't know how I can justify to my customers that they pay $6 to come to downtown Salina to park. I don't know how I can justify that. I struggle now to justify having them pay $2 to come to my store and shop, because they look at the empty parking spots next to them and go, why am I paying $2 when there's empty parking spots right next to me to come into your store and shop? I have lost, in the six years that I've been at my store, we have lost three customers that I know of that weren't just customers of mine, but they were frequent customers of mine, they were frequent customers of downtown eating establishment that have no longer come to Salina, because they came two times in a row, sat, parked their car in a lot, in an empty spot, with two or three other spots around them, and got parking tickets. And I just think that, I hope that as you all study this and move on through this process, that you really, really take that into consideration and take into consideration the potential of loss of business, because we really don't need businesses lost, customers lost to businesses in downtown Salina. Thank you.
Additional public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt resolution number 08-6489, accepting the downtown parking master plan submitted by Rich and Associates.
Second. Motion is to adopt resolution 08-6489. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
Item 8.5, authorize the middle of applications for the 2008 Kansas Emergency Shelter Grant Program.
Mr. Howey?
Mayor and Commissioners, we have been notified that we are eligible again this year to apply for the Emergency Shelter Grant Program funding for, from the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. You have noticed in your blue sheet, the five agencies are eligible to receive funds. They will submit those fund requests to Judith Irvin in our Neighborhood Services Division, and she, on behalf of the city, will apply for those funds. Today, we're asking for you to approve the mayor's signature on those grant funds and any applicable documentation that goes along with that grant. Any questions?
Questions, staff report? Thank you very much. I'd entertain any public comment, if there is any? Commission action?
Mayor, I'd move that we authorize staff to submit applications for the 2008 Kansas Emergency Shelter Grant Program.
Second.
Motion is to authorize the middle of applications for the 2008 Kansas Emergency Shelter Grant Program. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes five to zero.
I know some of them have left, but I did want to thank all the law enforcement individuals that assisted with the parking study, and we sure, certainly appreciate your help. Additional business? Not all, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second. Motion to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.